Join me, we will have a next group then start the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the city council meeting. We'll call the meeting to order, and we'll start council members. Well, first, just FYI, I think, well, I don't know if you know it or not, but Kevin had, is attending funeral or death-related event for a very, very good friend, so that's why he's not here. Approval of the agenda, anyone have any issues with the agenda you want to add or subtract? No? Okay. Motion to approve the agenda.
I mean, we approve the agenda.
Thank you, I'll second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it. With regard to the consent agenda, anything you want, any topic or area you want to pull out and ask questions on? Warrants are usually the one that you want to talk about.
I didn't have anything. Oh, you actually did one on the schedule claims list.
Okay.
So, on page one, there was the towing of the truck, Williams Service Florence Auto House Towing. They have a truck that broke down or something.
The trash truck.
The trash, it broke down or it was stuck?
It was broke down.
Broke down?
Yeah.
Okay. That was all I had.
Anyone else have anything? Okay. Then can I have a motion to approve the entirety of the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it. With regard to the public comment on matters on the day's agenda, the areas that... Mark, are you, is it your thought that we would take action on item six tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So, the proposal to hire Mr. Moore to work on creation of a historic preservation district would be something action may very well be taken on. Renewal of the insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield would be something that I suspect we'll be taking action on. Appointment to the Housing Board of Directors, Museum Board of Directors, and our work meeting dates that we're looking at setting, would all be items that we might take action on. So, anyone wishing to speak to those, come on up to the microphone, please. Okay, no one stepped forward on that. Let's go then to the historic district, Mark.
I can introduce it, Ben Moore is here.
Oh.
Mr. Moore made a presentation last, probably November, I believe, or early December. And this is simply, a few years back, the city started the creation of a, going through the process to see, mainly if they want to do the historical district. This would, Mr. Moore would finish it, hit contract, I believe, for $15,000 to finish it. And there'd be a lot of public hearings in the meantime. It, I think there was a, I mean, there's, you just need to go through the process, have the public hearing, get the public input. But at the end of the day, I know in other towns that they've covered, there's a lot of incentives and tax credits and access to programs that can help your downtown building owners access funds to make their facility nicer and keep them going. Ben, I don't know if you have anything to say tonight, or?
I'm more than happy to give some.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Moore.
I know Ben found a lot of work, Council Grove, Emporia, some other towns, and it's been very successful.
I was thinking about this, and you, I mean, I think you did a great job when you were here before in explaining the, what we're talking about here. But if I'm someone watching online and just, or whatever, who just heard, hears about this, reads it in the newspaper, whatever the case may be, and says, "Why do we want to do this?", can you give me your dumb guy short explanation?
I live in the country.
Not that you're a dumb guy.
No, no.
It's the person receiving who's dumb.
No, no offense, I live in the country, and sometimes you got to keep it simple.
Yeah.
And basically, this gives people who are reinvesting in those buildings, in the downtown district, the ability to compete, I would say, and to get tax credits, which the state ones you can get cash for at the end of the day. So, if you had to borrow, let's say, a million bucks, you know, to do a project downtown, which that's the kind of crazy numbers you get into on these things, you can get essentially 60% of that back. Now, only about 40% in cash with the state historic tax credits, and depends on who you sell them to, it gets complicated. But in a nutshell, you could get 60% back, so you'd be looking at rough ballparking, you know, 40% of your construction cost in a note, you know, and that's a big deal. And that's why we've seen success in other communities, you know, like Council Grove and Emporia have historic districts. And that really sets the stage for buildings that, you know, they're historic, but hey, they don't have, you know, as much history as, like in Council Grove, before they did the district, it was just the Hayes House, you know. But now that whole downtown area, almost all the buildings qualify. There's a few that don't, just like your district, there'd be a few that don't. But so many people have used those, and you can do them for small projects, too, and that's a big deal. So, if a guy has a leaky roof and needs a new roof, they can get state tax credits on those really easy. So, that's how I look at it, you know, from a rural background, it's a big deal to help level the playing field because, you know, you buy a new sink from Menards in Wichita, it costs the same as if you're buying it, you know, in Kansas City, and that helps, but you're not going to get the rent you do in Wichita here. So, it helps level the playing field.
Any other questions for?
To me, one of the biggest things to make or break this is, probably comes down to the business owners, as far as is this something they are in favor of or something they would be greatly against? Where in the process does that kind of happen, when that is presented to them, kind of allow them to make that decision, and we kind of get, go forward, or we're really opposed to this, don't? Is that something we've already passed, or is that something that would be coming up in the process of?
Well, all we've done so far, what we did like five years ago, or whatever it was during COVID, was a survey. Essentially, we looked at all the buildings, kind of mapped out an area of what, at the time, we thought was the right area. And that can flex and change depending on what the public wants and what you guys want. We kind of identified which buildings would be a contributor in the district, potentially, and that, and that's in that report. And we could go through that in the public meeting, say, "Hey, Joe, your building would be a contributor", and that would open the door to this. You want everybody on board, because you don't want to go to the state with people not on board. So, it's important to have those public meetings so people understand what it really means. Because at the end of the day, you can't override anything the state says in this process, but locally, you can. And that's happened in Emporia and Council Grove, where a business owner didn't want to do that process, and, you know, hey, a building was falling down, they had to tear it down, you know, and that makes the state mad and everything like that. But hey, they had to do it, and the city council had to help that process.
So, the responsibility for like educating the businesses about specifically the programs so they understand it the best that they can, that'll fall more so like on our shoulders to clear that out?
And we'll help with the, at the public meetings during this process. We're, we'll be there to answer any questions. I'm more than happy, we usually walk through scenarios on this to help people understand the math, how it can help a project, how it can help with bankers and things like that. Because I know, you know, one of the local banks here does some of that tax credit stuff, so that's a, that's a big deal, too. So, does that answer your question? Okay.
Actually, let me add just a little bit more. Is there, there isn't like any specific thing that would, other than us making the final decision, yes, we're still continuing forward with this, to where if there was negative feedback, to where if people weren't interested, that, there's no other like formal thing that?
The state has to say yes.
The state just approving that?
Yeah, and if, historically, if there are building owners, you know, that have pitchforks out and are against it, the state's going to say, "Time out, we're not doing this, we want people on board."
I didn't know if there's like some official thing we show that say, for the most part, we're in favor, they're...
Well, we have to submit documents to them eventually.
Sure, okay.
And we need your blessing on that, and you guys are a part of that process, we don't just do that. You have to say, "Hey, we're ready", and we'll come to you guys, say, "Hey, we've had these public meetings, you guys have all been a part of that, and we're ready to submit", and you guys have to say, "Ben, go ahead and submit", you know, and, you know, we serve at your pleasure that way.
I think we briefly touched on this the last time you were here, but can you remind me for sure, when you say the downtown area, like, is that, is it from the creek? And then how far west does it go? Do you know?
I'm pulling up the map that we had in our report.
Okay.
And it goes basically from Fifth, which is basically the creek, right, over to Walnut. Now, it gets wider and then narrower, you know, kind of wider in the middle of downtown. It does include the county courthouse.
Is there a way, I'm thinking about the museum on the other side of the creek.
The boundary was what we worked out in public meetings, but that was initial. That's not set in stone. It's part of this process to finalize everything, so...
The museum would be another 200 yards to the east of where we have it right now.
Basically, that, it would entail adding the park.
Right, yeah, we could probably catch it then, that, it was just a thought I had, because I know that's a, it's one of the older buildings that we have in town.
Yeah.
What about the Butler?
The Hill Building?
That one's already on it, I think, individually, I think, but I do not know.
Does, can the school benefit from it? Can the school district benefit from any tax credits?
Any government entity can receive the historic state tax credits and then sell them. So, I'm working with the city of Emporia right now. We did a small remodel in the police department building. It's like this, it's drop ceilings, really nuts and bolts stuff, but it's a tax credit project, so they can get that.
Would you want the Hill Building?
Margot, you know what you're doing, right? You're yelling, you're yelling from the back of the room.
Sorry.
Well, see, we were pretty much saying, too, the Hill Building is that limestone building that's right next to the school, that's part of the school, and if that would be something also that could possibly be. I know, it's still flexible.
Yeah, it's up to you guys how we do that.
Okay.
Is that always open, that you can add things, or is there kind of like a stopping point that?
Once, once we submit this, the district is defined.
Okay.
And, because it's a part of what's called the National Register nomination. So, the state approves it, and then the federal government approves it, and that's what opens the door to those tax credits.
Okay.
So, once that process is done, it becomes challenging to add to that district.
When this, when they first did, when, the first part of this process, when they were defining the area and doing that initial part, I thought that it really kind of caught everything that logically you would catch, except that part, that small area west of, or east of the creek. What I would suggest is we, since it can still, you know, we can amend it, but perhaps we could ask Mark to work, reach out to the superintendent and see if, I mean, they may already have that all covered in their own way with regard to them getting benefits from it. I know the county courthouse has previously, and we don't have a district, so they were making use of these. But, and I have no objection to expanding it further and catching the school property if we need to, but if they don't think it's beneficial to them, we could really make it simple.
I think Ben had a good point. I know at White Auditorium, probably seven, eight years ago, maybe up to 10, they put in air conditioning, White Auditorium, and it was all above the ceiling between the roof and the drop ceiling. It cost about $500,000, we pre-certified it with a 40% in Emporia.
Thirty.
Thirty, okay, so we, we got the tax credit for 30% of the half a million dollars, and we sold that to consortium out of Overland Park and got like 90 cents off the dollar. And so, really, for something we're going to do anyway, we ended up at about $115,000. It's a, it makes for a great project. And I consider this building, if this building qualified, you do the same thing on, anything, a roof or anything like?
Yeah, I mean, all that, as long as you're over $5,000, you can do a state tax credit project. For a government entity, that's all you can do, you can't do the federal ones. But in Marion, that'd be 40%, so that's...
This building is within that, I think you know that already.
Correct.
I'll just say this, one, Mark took me to Emporia, well, that sounds like he kidnapped me. Mark, I met Mark in Emporia last week, and we'll talk about this more in the future, but I met some pretty impressive people, one of whom is director of the Main Street Program. But he mentioned something I'd never even thought of, because I've thought of this, and I always felt like, man, this would be great for the people that own these buildings on Main Street, most of them need new roofs, or this, that, and the other, and this would allow them to be able to afford to do that, and then they could try to find a business to go in there or something, which is still true, I think. But he was pointing out to me that the cheapest way for a city to gain population is to gain it in areas that are already served by utilities and roads and all those sort of things. In other words, above those buildings, whether it's Airbnbs, he mentioned Airbnbs and hunting season, you know, all those kind of things, or just making it into apartments, condos, blah, blah, blah. The only one, I mean, we know that your dad and mom have theirs over their building, and then the gentleman that bought the Bowery building, he lived up there, I believe. But you get some nice things put in up there, you're going to, you can bring in people, it can be apartments, the teachers could, and we don't have to do anything in terms of supplying utilities other than what's there already.
You could, just to throw...
You're not going to shoot me down?
No, no, I'm going to add to it what you can do. In addition to the historic district, you could look at a RHID district for the downtown historic second floors. Emporia has that, for example, and that's really, really helpful to those developers there.
Yeah, what I plan on doing, all these people, like Ben, he works with that same team, they're willing to come over here and make a presentation, just on what, a gentleman RHID, Casey will come over and talk about some of the programs, and then probably Corey might come over. So, I know not everybody's met him, but I think it, I think those are things you need to look at.
Yeah.
They are very advantageous in other towns.
So, we're kind of going off the topic a little bit, but I just think that, and for me, when he was talking about that, it just was another reason why I think we need to do this, and why I would expect that those building owners would be all over it. So, unless there are, it's further discussion, yeah, please, Tim, go ahead.
With compensation of $15,000, there's also potential additional services that would have fees associated with that. Is there anything big as far as, that we kind of haven't covered, that we would see as an additional service or something we don't have here that we would definitely be having to?
Probably depends on what, what kind of expansion to the district you're talking about. That would be the only thing, if we're talking about one building, that's not a big deal. But if we're, you decide, hey, we're going to have...
More blocks, it's a whole different thing.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, because that's more time for us to do something like that.
Okay, that's it.
Anything else from you, Mark, with regard to, I assume that?
And we recommend, I think it's a good deal.
Okay. So, the, what's on the agenda then would be approval of us entering into an agreement with Mr. Moore to pursue state granting us the status of having a historic improvement district. Is that confusingly worded enough? Is it accurate?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'll make that motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. Thank you very much, Ben, and we'll let you and Mark take it from here for a while.
All right, I look forward to working with you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dierdorf isn't here, I'm wondering if council would be okay, that's number seven. Could we just, Mark's going to speak to that number seven part of it, but could we just skip to number eight since Ms. Lister is here and not keep her waiting any longer? Any objection to that?
Nope.
Kelly, if you don't mind, taking a hot seat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
When, when Ms. Lister walked in today and I saw her, I immediately, my stomach dropped, and I had hot flashes, and because, if you recall, we had, we were sworn in and immediately faced with making a decision a year ago at our very first meeting, and it was Kelly.
Yes, just jump right in.
So, yes, so be gentle, we're still, you know, we're learning our way.
Right. Well, I appreciate you letting me come out. Your Blue Cross and Blue Shield employee benefits renewed March 1, and so wanted to go over those numbers with you. And in your packets, there are going to be two spreadsheets that I'm going to refer to. The very top one, and they fold out because they're long, the very top one, you'll see that there is a current versus renewal at the very top, so that we're on the same page there. So, that's your current grandfathered plan. I like to remind everybody, being part of that grandfathered pool still, the things they look at as far as rating your group is you're part of that non-grandfathered pool statewide. They look at your group's demographics, which is an average age and gender factor, and then they also look at your group's utilization and how that impacts the overall pool. I just get percentages based off group size, there's not a lot of detail they can give due to that personal health information. But there was a 7% adjustment based off the group's claims over the last year. There was a 0.6% increase on age and gender, so very, very small adjustment there. And then the statewide pool, because you have three different deductibles, and it is tied to those deductible levels, you're seeing anywhere from like 4.5% to 5% on the pool. So, when you look at the bottom of the spreadsheet, when they actually plug in those factors, you're looking at a 12.8, 12.86% increase on the health. Dental separate, and we'll get to that. Being grandfathered, there are no changes to the plan design, all the benefits stay the same. Contribution then is the other thing we have to look at, and under the Affordable Care Act guidelines, it says that whatever percent, you can kind of look at it both ways, the city or the employee, whatever percent is being paid, they look back to March 2010 when the ACA went into effect. So, you can only adjust that five percentage points to remain grandfathered. So, an example is you pay 100% of a single, you could pass on 5% of this new premium, but that would be the maximum. Does that make sense? And that is not per year, that is a one-time adjustment. I have groups ask, you can always pay more, it's just we really look at it when groups start backing off, employer groups start backing off on contributions, so. So, those are kind of the guidelines that we're working within. Your enrollment then is at the very bottom left, it's going to show you how many contracts are in each plan between A, B, and C. I will tell you, EE is employee only, EC is employee child, ES is employee spouse, and then you have a family. Okay? From there, I always look, what would it be if you did move non-grandfathered? So, right now, you have a composite rate, it doesn't matter, anybody that's single has the same premium, anybody that's family has the same premium. The second spreadsheet would be examples of non-grandfathered benefits closest to your offerings today. The biggest difference is when you go non-grandfathered, it goes to an age rating system. So, everybody's premium is different based off their, their age and ages of any family members that they're covering. So, for this comparison, what we did is we just mapped everybody over. If they're in A, we put them in that non-grandfathered A, B to B, C to C. Oh, I'm sorry, back up. They did put totals on each one, so like if everybody was an option A. But you're anywhere from a 40% to an 86% increase, yeah, on the non-grandfathered. So, that would not be my recommendation.
Nope.
Even at the 12-plus percent, I will tell you, our non-grandfathered groups are seeing 20% increases across the state. So, so I think the grandfathered plans are still doing well. It does depend on the group and utilization, but you guys did have a decent year, so. Behind that, just real quick, there is going to be the contract change piece. Smart Shopper is a new tool that we'll be rolling out, and we will be notifying, notifying your members directly at home. So, they will be able to go out and compare services, different procedures, there's going to be over 200 on the list. You put in your zip code, it's going to tell you what costs are at different facilities in the area, depending on what direction people go for care. If a member decides to go to one of the lower-cost facilities, there are cash incentives for them to do that, and that is based off the savings. So, I think that also will be a good education tool, just so that they can see what things cost and how that can vary, so.
Can I interrupt just for a minute?
You may, yeah.
I mean, I think that, I'd be real surprised if you give, if you answer something other than what I expect, that that is something not unique to this, that's everywhere you're doing this, that's something that, that you're offering your, the parties that are getting this assurance, right?
Anybody with Blue Cross of Kansas will have that, yes. As you are working through your folder, just to point out some things, this bundle is going to go with the non-grandfathered options. The only reason I included that was because where I mentioned it's age rated, if you would want to see what that means per individual, the census is attached, so you can kind of have an idea of how that would impact your employees. The dental is in the tab a little bit further back, we're seeing a 2% increase on the dental. So, a very minimal adjustment on that. 78 cents in a single plan, to be exact. And then last, we have your term life and accidental death and dismemberment renewal. That's going to say advance at the top left of that piece of paper. The city offers $15,000 term life and accidental death and dismemberment to all benefit-eligible employees. And so, that rate is staying the same, there is no adjustment, and we are at $5.40 per person. I do know they did include a proposal bumping that up to $25,000 if that is ever any interest. That can be done at any time, so you do have that information. And that would go to 8.75 for $25,000, so $3.35 more for $10,000 more in term life.
The rate's still the same per thousand?
It actually goes from 36 to 35 cents per thousand, to, it goes down a little bit to higher volume, yeah.
Is this some, something that does or does not require the employee, or the person wishing to take advantage of it to get a physical and go through all of those sort of things?
It's all guarantee issues, since it is paid by the city, they are, they are automatically accepted, yeah.
I had that with the state, and that, I assume this was a similar thing, yeah.
Yeah. So, that is all I have.
So, is this something that, I mean, last year, basically, it was just, we're going to do what we've been doing that seems to be working, and we approved it that night. Is this something, Mark, that you think, any of the, I mean, there weren't a whole lot of options, but there were some things I guess we could talk about?
No, I can tell you, it seemed like a very good option. I know, I can think of a couple of the cities, Emporia, my wife's, where she's had, in UFD 4297, or 497, the rates have gone up higher than that. And I know there's, there's some pools out there that these are very good rates, excellent rates, and a good plan. So, we'd recommend you keep the same plan. So, we'd recommend you keep the same plan.
Janet, have you had any employees make any inquiries about, I mean, $15,000 isn't a whole lot, I mean, but it would bury you. Has anyone inquired about whether that could be increased to a higher amount, anything like that?
Nobody's ever asked for it.
Yeah.
I have one question.
Yes.
So, are all the in-network available with this plan, in-network, the locations here locally, where the employees would be living, basically within the county, are they all covered in network programs for the hospital and Marion Hillsborough and the dental facilities as well? Do you know that?
The providers in the hospital, yes. Dentists, I would have to double-check on that. It's usually a pretty extensive network in all the counties. Hutch Clinic is going out, went out of network January 1, but that's really been the only change.
So, what was previously is staying the same?
Yes, yes, nothing's changed.
Okay, so that won't be changed.
Good question, by the way.
Yeah.
Drive all the way to Wichita, okay?
No, I.
Won't do that.
You have a motion? If you don't, that's fine, I just.
I do, I'm just trying to figure out the word. I move that we approve a continuation of the health insurance benefits with Blue Cross of Kansas in the, continuing in the same grandfathered-in way that was in previous year with the rate increases.
See, it's not so easy.
No, I second that.
You second that, okay. Any further discussion? Janet, you've got the gist of that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? I always have it unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you any year.
Are you coming back Tuesday?
Yes.
Thanks, Kelly.
So, let's go back to Mr. Deirdorf, who's on the agenda with regard to city administrator search. And Mark, I'll let you speak to that.
Well, I might mention, first, I apologize. John sent it to me late Friday afternoon. I came out for a couple hours. I fell down a couple weeks ago. I'm not as young as I used to be, and so, I didn't pick this up till today. And I was on the phone with John. What we'd like you to do is look at it tonight, or maybe the rest of this week. Make any changes or comments you made, and Mike talked to me about some photos and things earlier today. And give them back to us, and he will be here in two weeks. He would like a final approval before we send that out. But part of that, he sent it Friday, and I just wasn't here when it came.
I know Zach had already found a couple of typos and such. So, everyone, just send that to Mark and Janet. And I'd say that just so you'll have a backup, Mark, in case.
In case I fall again.
Yes, you fall again.
Don't do that.
He's been a hurting unit for a while here. And when we were walking down the icy streets in Poria, it was kind of like, you know, me taking grandpa for a walk. And I, Megan Jones, who is part of the Marion Merchants Group, I made them aware that we got the thing from Sterling that kind of, you know, promoted the town to the job applicants, potential applicants. And that we were, I wanted to make sure that we had something nice. Well, they decided, and this was MEDI as well, she's part of that, that we could take that same info, make it into a tri-fold kind of a brochure, you know, glossy print, that sort of thing. And then it could be used just to promote businesses or recruit businesses, to promote the city at, you know, the state fair, whatever you wanted to do. So, she put together that, and it's, she did a really nice job. And I thought the pictures that she used were just more flattering than the ones that are in, what, the sample that they sent today, the draft that they sent. So, I'm going to have Megan to send some of those pictures to Mark that he can pass on to John. And if you guys.
What building is that middle one?
The middle one.
On the second page.
That's the high school.
High school.
It is the high school?
It's terribly unflattering, because it's just a shot of the old 1930s or whatever building. If they had taken that from an angle from the northeast, you would have had that building, plus the addition of the middle school, plus the Performing Arts Center.
Yeah, because Becky didn't even recognize this building.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Huh.
And on the second, the last page, I guess, the thing in the middle, I don't think that's even in the city. I think that's out in the country.
The Statue of Liberty?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. It's over there.
Where?
It's.
It's almost private property.
By the County Lake, when you go out to Highway 77.
That's not in the city.
No. Oh, I thought, I was agreeing with you. No, it's not in the city. It's out there.
And there's nothing wrong with, you know, promoting the area. We're doing that. But I just thought it was, the pictures probably ought to be something in the city.
Agreed.
So, how about this? How about everyone get their comments and/or proposed changes to Mark and Janet within a week, by next Monday? And that way, Mark, that would give you a week to get them to John and answer any questions.
And then they can put it back, and we'll have it at the next meeting.
Yeah. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, we're not in north-central Kansas, are we?
Oh, no, that's one of Zach's.
That was the other thing I thought, too.
Well, Zach also, he pointed out to me, they've got the wrong zip code for us on page two at the bottom.
I'm guessing they cut and paid for it.
Yeah.
Correctly.
Made a few of those mistakes in my top. Okay, let's move on, then. Mark, with regard to the Housing Board of Directors.
Yeah, minor change, we made two appointments. And you have Jimmy Shipman and Marty Frederickson.
Oh, you jumped.
Oh, housing, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That's just a reappointment of Helen Resnick.
Well, it's only a reappointment if we do it.
Right. They're asking for that to be done.
Does everyone know who Helen is?
I do not.
Well, and I may, if I say something wrong, someone can correct me. But Helen is a longtime teacher, a former teacher, in the high school level, I believe, and lives in Marion on Cedar Street, North Cedar, yeah, North Cedar. And if she's nice enough to be willing to be on the housing board, I suggest we reappoint her. So, at this point, I would make it in motion form that I would propose to reappoint Ms. Resnick to the Housing Board of Directors. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And then, back to you now, Mark.
Our next two appointments to the VJ Board of Directors are in the name for Poria, Jimmy Shipman and Marty Frederickson.
And these also came from the current board, I mean, recommendations that they, they've talked to those people and, right?
I believe so.
The housing board, there should have been a letter in your.
Yeah, yeah, saw that.
On that one. And then Christian Peterson came in and talked to me about these two, Jimmy and Marty.
Did he mention whether they had talked to Jimmy and Marty before they?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. So, again, in terms of a meritorial appointment, I would propose to appoint those two gentlemen as requested. I'll make that in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Next item, number 11, is our proposed work meeting dates. We, when we had our last, I don't know whether we call it a study session or work meeting. I kind of vacillate back and forth on it, but we know what we're talking about. We decided February 4, April 14, June 23, August 11, and October 27, all at 5:00. Anyone have any second thoughts on that or?
You said February 4, but it's actually February 24, correct?
Yeah, that's what's written down here.
Okay.
That's what's written down here, yeah.
We're just taking, we have to make sure and correct you if you're wrong.
Yeah.
I know. What I don't know is why you have to take such joy in it. Do we have a motion, then, to approve those as our set dates for 2025?
I'll make that motion to approve those.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? I always have it. We will then get to Department Head Reports, and we will include the airport, if you have anything. Margot?
Oh, you can hear me now. I spent time today on Facebook. I've identified 12 different group pages that I can advertise for vendors for Art in the Park. And so, I posted on 12 different places, and I've already got like 20 people wanting information. It was immediate, so, yeah. So, we're blowing up Art in the Park again, so.
I know you've reported this, but just refresh my memory, what, how many vendors do you typically have?
Lately, it's been about 150. In the old days, it was 250. So, it's not what it used to be, but it's changed and grown in different ways. And we've got such a great variety coming in. I had some new wings today, you know, people that have barbecue equipment, utensils to sell, along with, you know, barbecue products, things like that. A little different than what we've had before on that line. So, it's just fun to find those different things and have a good show for everybody. So, we've got a big variety of stuff. And we had people with food reaching out as well. So, we'll see what kind of different food we can bring in, but also not step on the locals' toes, so.
Questions for Margot?
No rain gear vendors this year willing to come and be prepared for selling all the gear they didn't want to get rain?
I heard if you take a roll of trash bags down there and cut some holes in them, you can sell them for $5 a bag. No rain, no rain.
Jim? James?
Yeah, I put together a end-of-the-year report for 2024. And so, for the year of 2024, there were 50 complaints with 513 inspections overall. That includes 102 grass inspections with 58 violations, grass violations written, and 24 yards, we abated 24 yards out of all that. Wrote 42 code violations for various things, mainly automobiles and yards. There was a couple no occupancies, a no permit, some fence and structure things, blocking an alley and a dead tree. All together with the grass and the city code violations, there was 100 violations written together. In municipal court, we prosecuted 10 of those violations. So, I was real happy with the, how people were paying attention and taking care of, you know, things that come up. We did abate one yard last year, and currently, we have two yards to abate when the weather complies or allows us. Building projects for 2024. The Marion County Planning and Zoning Road and Bridge and Emergency Management located at 1240 Commercial Drive was issued a certificate of occupancy, and they moved into their newly renovated structure, which is out there on the highway, next to where the ambulance services is. Bill and Essie's located at 301 East Main was issued a certificate of occupancy for their renovated lower-level restaurant. SNS Metta Spa located at 301 East Main Street was issued a certificate of occupancy and moved into their newly renovated structure. St. Luke's Hospital on 535 South Freeborn was issued a certificate of occupancy for their new addition. I believe it's a rehabilitation and exercise area. It was a very, very nice project for the hospital. USD 408 Marion and Florence were issued a certificate of occupancy for their new concession stand rec building located on Eisenhauer Drive. David Pyle was issued two certificate of occupancies for two duplexes located on East Forest Street. And he is currently in the process of completing two additional duplexes on East Forest Street. The Marion County Health Department, new structure located at 1220 East Main is nearing completion. Final inspections will seem to be completed, and I believe we scheduled those final inspections for Thursday morning. And once they pass their final inspections, they will get a certificate of occupancy. Lang Real Estate, currently working on four new houses located on North Cobal. Those structures are being finished, and they are about ready for final inspections for their certificate of occupancies. 1200 East Maple, the owners are currently working on a new home. The structure is being finished up and is about ready for final inspection. 318 North Elm, the owners up there are currently working on a home addition and renovation. They totally have redone the backside of this house and changed the roof style so that it doesn't leak. It's a very nice one they have done up there. They're about ready for final inspections on that project. 115 North Elm, owners are currently working on an addition to, it's a two-story addition to their home. I have some goals for this year coming up. One is the danger structures, to present some, ask for the council for some resolutions on those. That is coming together very well. Recreation vehicle ordinance, I believe it's still on the agenda for planning and zoning, mainly to keep people from living in campers and designate a location where they're to be parked at a residence. Fence ordinance, still looking at a fence ordinance, trying to be proactive on fence ordinance. We have metal fences, pallet fences, bog wire fences, electric fences. And the new fence ordinance would follow the zoning code as well. Looking at 2021 ICC codes, building codes. Hopefully, we can put together a building and trades board that would assist with this here and would be an advisory board for the city council on these building codes. And they would also work as an appeals board for aggrieved, anyone that would be aggrieved by a decision of the building official. And that's pretty much all. I've done quite a bit of training this last year. The position I'm in, if I was in a better city, I would just be a building inspector, whether residential or building, or I would be an electrical inspector. In the smaller communities, we do it all, and so, there are so much different areas of training that, you know. So, I have done quite a bit of training last year and hopefully do more training this year. Tomorrow, I'm doing a webinar training on tiny houses. This is becoming a big thing. You can go on Amazon for $10,000 and buy a tiny house. It does not meet the building code, by the way. Walmart's selling one also. Their prefab, you just throw them up, and it's, so, I'm very excited about the training class put on by ICC tomorrow. That's it. Any questions?
Couple, one thought, and that, I'm just speaking to not only James, but to Zach and all of our staff. We, there's no such thing as being too professional. And I, so if we have opportunities for education and enhancement of our knowledge of our jobs, that's something that, you know, obviously, it's a case-by-case basis, what can be afforded and what can't. that's something that, you know, obviously it's a case by case basis, what can be afforded and what can't. If James says, hey, I want you to send me to South America for six months so I can study, you know, pineapple trees or something, I'd probably have to say no. But I, I just think that's a good thing and it's good for the city. It's good for us and all. And I do have a question. And I'm, I'm sorry, apologize for hitting you cold with this, but do we have, as you talked about some of the abatements and things, unlike the grass, just the overgrown lawns and whatever, I, I can think of at least one, and there may be more place in town, that every summer for, well, I don't know, as long as I can remember back, it, it's just been overgrown and eventually either the next door neighbor or the city has had to come in and mow it. Clearly, whatever we're doing is not providing an incentive for that property, out of town property owner to keep his lawn mowed. Do we have any kind of a, you know, like habitual violator ordinance or anything that?
No, I looked into that.
Okay.
And it, it was quite interesting. I think the Kansas League of Municipalities even had some training concerning this here about you can't assume that a yard is going to be in violation again and because, and just call it habitual offender. I would like to have something like that. I really would.
I don't want to.
Because I have, I have some repeating customers, you know.
I don't want to assume it's going to be viol, in violation. I can just say, I can prove it has been in violation.
The grass, the grass. So, you know, right one, we get the right one violation for the year, for the season. And after that, once it becomes in violation again, there's no more further notices and we go in and abate that. But some people have passed on, you know. There's just no one just taking up the mowing job there. We do assess, we do give people the opportunity to pay and, you know, once after 30 days, we can assess it to their property taxes and that's what we do.
Right. Okay. Not, not the answer I wanted, but okay.
I know. I, I looked into that after you mentioned that to me.
Yeah.
A few months ago.
Yeah, as well, back. Thank you. Zach? Nothing from you? Well, then Buck, you're gonna, okay, you're gonna come up here. You can just take the mic, whichever you prefer.
I'll take the hot seat again.
Okay.
Hope y'all are staying warm.
Well, keep hoping.
My gosh. Just had three real quick news items from the airport world. Our first airport board meeting is Wednesday next week, January 29. And per our, per the council meeting, the, this last council meeting, I was wanting to come in on this meeting to start giving some short briefings on what the needs of the airport are, what the issues are. If I could forego that until the next council meeting, February 3, that way we'll have a current airport board meeting under our belts. And I'll have a fresh set of notes to bring in, so if that would work for everybody. Item number two, huge shout out to Mark and the City Road Crews. They were out to the airport Friday last week and scraped off the top six to eight inches of snow and ice that was all over the place out there. So they got the main runway cleared and taxiways are cleared. So now the sun can do its job, so, but.
Hopefully.
Huge shout out and thank you to Mark and the Road Crews for doing that. Item number three is more of an update item. Last fall, I think it was right around Thanksgiving timeframe last fall, there were some orange ball markers that were added to the upper wire on the power lines out there. And one of our runway, we've got four active runways at the airport. And the one runway, runway 321, the east end of that runway was less than 1,500 feet from those power lines. And the FAA, the FAA regs state that if, if, if the end of a runway is less than 1,500 feet from, from a, an actual power line, it needs to be marked. So anyway, those markers are now up. So if the FAA would ever come out and snoop around, why, they'll, they'll be happy.
Buck, you might remind me. I think we're putting up some more.
I think we're going to be putting up some more also.
We bought them and then, and I don't know the name, I wish I did. The Rural Electric Cooperative putting those up for us when they, when they get time. So there's a, I can't think of the name, Tim Dewey.
Try County?
Pardon?
No.
R E C A.
Yeah, I can't think of the gentleman we're working with. They've been very kind in doing that when they can get to it.
Yeah. Tim, Tim, Tim Urock is.
That, that's a woman.
Yeah, Tim Urock.
Yeah.
So anyway, we're up to, we're up to snuff as far as those, as far as those power lines go, so. Those of us that are local, that use the airport, we've always known those lines are there. But somebody coming in from out of town and doesn't do their homework, they could very easily hit those lines, so. Anyway, I just wanted to give Darren Newfeld a huge shout out to and thank you for his knowledge and, and help. He's awesome. And.
Don't say that too often. Because he, he's going to repeat it.
That's in my notes later.
But I wanted, I wanted to give, Tim, Tim Urock, I wanted to give him a huge shout out. Him and his, him and his crew put those up for us, so. No charge to the city. So that's all I had.
Thank you.
Thanks, Buck.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? Thank you. We'll come up then to you, Mark.
I'll give Darren a shout out. Darren was in today and he's working on multiple grant applications in our 9010. As you recall, last year, we, we received a KDOT award for the airport to do some cracks. So I mean, he's trying to get that expanded. Whether we get it or not, we don't know yet, but he filled out the app. And he's also filling out an app for a fuel system out there. We haven't had one for several years. It's a 9010 program and if it was funded, it's just what we need. It'd be brought in and you can move it around. So he's working on those for the city and does a very good job at it. And I might also mention at our next meeting, plan on having Greg Barnburg either here by phone or in person. The Kansas Rural Water Association came out with a pretty unique financing program that, he worked for Raymond James and I worked with Greg for years. He happened to be working with them on this program where very low interest rates, I think it's a double A minus rates. And we can become part of, and all the cities who are members can become part of. Nothing else, he can present the program to you. And then inadvertently, I forgot to put Locust Street on here last week, so we'll approve that next week. And talk to Darren, we're fine with the contract and everything on that. And then I also, as I mentioned earlier, just, I just want to expose you guys to some programs. I think Casey Woods might be here next week, in the next two meetings. Talk about all the programs that are available in small cities. And kind of like Ben alluded to earlier, projects are hard, but when you can get some help here, here, and here, all of a sudden they became more workable and doable for somebody. And the final thing, we talked last week, or maybe a time fly, a couple weeks ago about a snow removal update policy. You know, I've contacted multiple cities. After that last event, everybody's looking at their policies. But we'll put that on a future agenda to go over, but. You know, the little cities I contacted, it was an event from Kansas City to Hayes to Wichita. It was quite an event that everybody struggled with. And I think it was the ice that caused most of the problem.
The one thing about that I would just run a reinforce is that Tim asked for that.
Oh, yeah.
This is not us trying to impose a policy on it. He asked. So it doesn't have to be, you know, minute. It could be broad, but he asked.
Well, I got a, I agree. And I think you keep it rather simplistic so you can make some decisions. As I recall in Emporia, we went in the neighborhoods when it was six inches. There's so many factors. If you have a quick snow coming in and the sun could be out tomorrow, that's one thing. If you have a cold spell coming in for two weeks, that's another. And I, I did go around and I do have a couple of copies of policies. One larger city in the metro area had a 40-page snow removal policy. I think that's way too big for here. I think Emporia's had a two to three page. So I, I think just something in general guidelines, because I will guarantee every snowstorm's going to have its own unique challenges.
If we adopt the 40-page, when Zach and James are going to be in charge.
We'll need an interpreter.
It'd be like a page per block in town.
That it?
Yes.
Janet?
I don't think so. I don't have anything.
I don't have anything. I would just real quickly comment that meeting Mark in Emporia and meeting the folks that he introduced me to really was worthwhile, I thought. And the gentleman that he just mentioned, Casey Woods, he just wowed me. And it really excited me about what can be done. That, you know, we just have to put ourselves in a position to take advantage of some of these opportunities to either empower investors to invest their time and effort to, to locate something here or to, you know, cause it from the bottom up to happen, but in terms of like city projects and stuff. But I, I just was really glad that, that Mark finally grabbed me by the ear and said, let's do this. And, and he's going to bring some of those people here. And we spent, you know, most of the day and you don't have time for that. But if after you hear from them, you have questions, you know, let Mark know, because I'm, I'm sure that they'd take a phone call and.
They're very knowledgeable people.
And then the other thing, just, I wanted to, I recognize that, you know, if you go to, well, South Roosevelt, the street isn't great right now. But I, and I also understand that if you're looking outside and, you know, it's somebody, you just cleaned, cleared your driveway and then the city came by and put a winrow of snow in front of it, that, that isn't fun, but I don't know how else they're supposed to clean the road. I feel like that our staff, I know they worked really hard. And I, I think it was a good point to mention that not only are they trying to get the emergency routes open, they're trying to get the arteries in and out of the city open. They're trying to get the, the businesses, areas open so that they can conduct business. And they are also, obviously, they've, they've got the airport to deal with and they've got all of our side streets. And when you have significant amount of ice followed by a significant amount of snow followed by, you know, long-term no thaw, low temperatures, there's only so many of them and they only have so many pieces of equipment to work with. And all in all, I think they did a really good job. That's it for me. Do we have any comments from any others?
Are you going to let Tim?
Oh.
One more correction to you.
I'm going to, I'm going to, are you noticing a pattern here because?
Is Tim and I correcting you all the time?
No, the pattern is I always just want to end when I get done.
He's got to have the last word.
I'm sorry, Tim, go ahead.
One smaller thing that we brought up in our work-study session, and someone had asked me the question about our, our, the small electronic, not small, the electronic sign on Elm and Main Street. I'm just like, what can go on that? What can be put on it? Just kind of asking me questions that I couldn't answer. And I just want to, in the future, look into some more information about that, because generously, Gene Winkler, who helped get the thing up and, and funded and has been running it for now, I'm assuming about five years, just to have a plan of action of, who may someday take over for him and how to go about doing that and just having it, an understanding of simplified guidelines that are, should be followed, that we have already been established. And just something in the future I was going to want to bring up to clarify and have it lined out so that we can try to take advantage of that sign the best we can, so.
Thank you.
Also, just a, I don't know if it's a shout out to Electric Crew or not, but, you know, through this whole ice storm, there was very little, if any, electrical outages, which is very unusual to Marion, especially in storms. So hopefully this is maybe due to just some foresight of having some of our infrastructure, keeping it up to date and getting, keeping things maintained well enough. But we're very fortunate that we did not have any outages. So we tend to hear a lot when things do go out, but it doesn't get said much when things don't go out. You know, it's not a direct action of someone sitting there keeping something plugged together that, but it's indirectly just, you know, hopefully through managing things in a good way that things have been, the electrical system was kept up and going through that storm, so.
You're here. Mark, that reminds me, would you, Jason Wheeler had promised us that we would do an open house at the water plant. I don't want to do it now, but I do want to make sure that sometime when we get to decent weather that we do have that.
We do that. He's also possibly trying to prepare a little on video, a YouTube video or something.
Oh, good.
With the before and after. He's done quite a lot of.
Excellent.
Excellent work up there.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourned this meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned.